Good evening, the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona is hereby called to order and roll call please.
Councilmember Augurton. Present, councilmember Bunch. Councilmember Altima.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Present.
Vice Mayor Ray, here, Mayor Morris.
Present.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is executive session, council discussion, consultation, direction to, and legal advice from the town attorney pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero three, parent A and parent three and four regarding water treatment agreements. Is there a motion to move an executive session?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three town council meeting. At this point, we'd like to do the pledge of allegiance. I see a lot of faces I don't recognize today. I'll lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Looks like we're gonna have a really interesting time and look forward to taking the comments and dealing with the issues of the town. Are there any public announcements? Okay, we'll move on to call to the public.
We have no one wishing to speak?
No call to the public. Town manager report.
Mayor, members of council, I would like to remind you and notify the public, we put a notice on our website and social media about some sewer cleaning and video inspections in the Ranch of Manana and Knowles neighborhoods. They should be, they began today, and they should be wrapping up Ranch of Manana and move on to the Knowles. So that if you're in those areas, that is what the town is up to in your neighborhood. On a serious note, we had quite the kerfluffle on Friday with the Abrazo Hospital and the P, what was it called? PHI company putting, posting a notice about, they called it a town hall meeting to talk about helicopters landing for medevac purposes at the Abrazo Micro Hospital. The town staff nor the elected officials were notified in advance of that meeting. We had no idea that they were looking into the service. We had gone through this issue before they even built the building, and that was only a couple of years ago. So needless to say, we wrote them a letter and stated that the town stands firm in our opposition to medevac helicopter landings at Abrazo Cave Creek Hospital. The meeting that was scheduled Monday evening, they did not proceed with that meeting. I did have a conversation with their CEO today, and he was very apologetic. And they will proceed, if they proceed, there, there is no commitment to even moving forward on that issue. They would at least meet with the staff first, so we'd be able to inform the mayor and council and the public if there was something new or different or any reasons that they wish proceed, but at this point they are basically on hold. They, they don't have any meetings scheduled with us, and they don't have any public meetings scheduled. So that's the status at this time.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, approval of the November seventh, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting minutes. Number two is approval of December fifth, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting minutes. Number three is approval of December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting minutes. And number four is approval of a number twelve restaurant liquor license for Kiki Rays as requested by Rochelle Renee Q, agent. Is there a motion to accept this consent agenda as read? So moved.
Check it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. Now, run the main agenda items. I think that's the reason everybody's here today. Council discussion and approval of first reading of ordinance Z oh, twenty twenty-three dash zero one, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona, approving case Z dash twenty-two dash zero three Carefree Casa of Cave Creek Zone Change Request, amending the official town of Cave Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zone of a parcel totaling approximately one point four zero acres located at the northwest corner of Barbie Lane and Fifty-third Street from a desert rural DR forty-three zone to a commercial buffer CB zone placed by the planning director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Stephen Paralis is actually going to present the case. What I wanted to take the opportunity to do real quick is, is give a brief history of, of area eighteen. Brian's gonna pull up a map for us here in a minute. But tonight's agenda, council is going to consider the first reading of an ordinance for a zone change request for one parcel located within area eighteen, which currently has a mixed-use land use designation. Area eighteen was approved through the major general plan amendment process in two thousand and ten, where the town council by resolution R two thousand and ten dash eleven amended the land use of eighteen parcels totaling approximately thirty acres from a desert rural land use to mixed use. Brian's pulled up that map. Area eighteen is illustrated there. In, in purple, the subject parcel is, if you see the E, it's, it's right there in that location. You've got the Abrazo Hospital, which was the subject of an earlier presentation, just north of that, Sprouts to the northeast, and then Tractor Supply to the, to the east. Early in two thousand and ten, the town council directed staff to bring forward area eighteen, which according to the public record was supported by the residents at that time. The planning department hosted a neighborhood meeting to discuss area eighteen in July of two thousand and ten. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of area eighteen in August of two thousand and ten, and the town council voted six to one to adopt the resolution changing the land use map to mixed use in September of two thousand and ten. That decision was not referred by the voters. At that time, the rationale for the mixed use designation being approved was to allow for flexibility and opportunity in future zoning requests to mix or co-mingle intensity, stepping intense commercial uses down as it moves away from major arterials like Cave Creek Road and Carefree Highway, south and west. The zoning has already been amended along those arterials from DR forty-three to general commercial, and development has subsequently occurred, which I just previously went over. This land use amendment for the area was approved ultimately as the staff presentations from two thousand and ten illustrate, because the town realized, and this is a quote from the staff report, "The town's need to forecast potential areas where commercial development is a viable option," end quote. "A zone change application is consistent as the general plan identifies that the area is mixed use." The land use map containing the mixed use designation for area eighteen was reaffirmed by the voters with the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one general plan. With that, Stephen, please proceed with your presentation of this application.
Thank you, Luke. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Staff is here this evening to bring forward to council consideration of case number Z dash twenty-two dash oh three more zone change request, first reading of ordinance oh, twenty twenty-three dash oh one. The zone change request is to change the underlying zoning and amend the town of Cave Creek zoning map for parcel two one one dash four six dash oh two seven A from DR forty-three to the commercial buffer. The parcels within area eighteen consist of a mixed-use land use designation per the two thousand and twenty-one general plan. Within the mixed, mixed-use land use designation category, the focus is not on individual parcels, but rather all eighteen parcels within area eighteen, and to incorporate various uses with a coherent design and practical functions such as commercial institutional and residential being co-mingled in a single project or residential or office adjacent to retail establishments on a larger site. The location of the applicant's proposed rezone application is located at the northwest corner of Barbie Lane and Fifty-third Street. The applicant's tentative development plan proposes residential units along with commercial, with a commercial component, which is consistent with the mixed-use land use designation overview within the general plan by incorporating a residential and commercial institution within a single project, and also being adjacent to re, to retail establishments on a larger site. The applicant has not submitted a site plan review application as they intend to ask for consideration to amend the zoning map in advance of finalizing the site design, including preparation of grading and drainage plans. The property would still require a pre-application conference with all departments prior to submittal of a site plan review application, where additional scrutiny is given to the project and development criteria are reviewed for compliance with town codes, ordinances, and guidelines. At the planning commission meeting held on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, the town of Cave Creek Planning Commission voted six to one to recommend approval of zone change application case Z dash twenty-two dash oh three, subject to the following condition. Residential uses shall be limited to residential rental units. Residential platted subdivisions are prohibited, including but not limited to condominium plats, town-owned plats, and single-family residential plats. Case number Z dash twenty-two dash oh three conforms with the requirements outlined in the zone change application and is, and is consistent with the general plan. The case is solely for a zone change request and whether this, the proposed commercial buffer zone is appropriate for this location. Mr. Mayor, at this ti, at this moment in time, are there any questions for staff? If not, the applicant is here to answer any questions and present their application.
Questions for staff from council?
Yes, I have one. I noticed on the plat that you're doing the offset from the property line rather than an offset from the, from the easement line. Why is that?
The town of Cave Creek takes all setbacks from property, property boundaries, not from easement boundaries, unlike Maricopa County. That's, that's often a question from even someone building a residential property. If they've got a twenty-foot ingress, egress, and public utility easement, we would take the setback from the property line, not the edge of easement.
When I built my barn two years ago, I had to set back from the easement, not from the roadway, because the way that the property is, I own almost an entire section of Cave Creek, or not Cave Creek, but Old State Road. I just want to make sure that we're consistent, and that consistency is applied across the board.
I have a question for Luke. If this zone change application was not approved, how would that impact the applicant's plan?
The zoning ordinance requires, if a, if an application to rezone is denied, it would force an applicant to wait in a one year until resubmittal of, of any such entitlement moving forward. So really what they would have now is, is what's on the property currently.
So they would have a choice whether to wait a year and apply again, or pursue a different plan, a smaller plan, perhaps?
No plan outside of what's currently permitted in DR forty-three would be allowed without, without a rezone.
What would that be under DR forty-three?
A single-family residence, an accessory dwelling unit. The property is DR forty-three, less than two acres, so ranch uses aren't permitted. Essentially, as I've stated, what's there now is all that would be permitted until such time another application came before council.
Very good, thank you.
Other questions?
I, I have a question. I'm trying to figure out how to put words to it, but turn your mic on. Thank you. Hear myself. So when we looked at this project earlier, there was some language that came as part of the sort of admonitions about what was gonna happen on this project. They were, and I'm, I'm blanking here on the, on what they were called, but and there were, there were, I think, three or four mitigations that, that a project like this in that area could be, could be looked at through the lens of, and I'm, I don't see those on this application. And would you talk just a little bit about that, Stephen? What happened there?
Councilmember Altima, are you referring to the case below, on the property below this case? There were three conditions applied on that case, which we're not here to present tonight. We're here to discuss the
Those don't apply to this.
No, they were different cases and had different circumstances.
That helps, thank you. I'm sorry, I missed that.
No worries.
Other questions? Ms. Moore?
Mayor and council, thank you for hearing my case. I believe I'm the first of the year, so let's see how that's gonna work out. I have a presentation, and I left my Do I click it, or do I tell somebody else to click it? To change the I can say, okay. Okay. I stand before you as a longtime Cave Creek resident. The name of the applicant is Carefree Casas of Cave Creek LLC. I've been renamed throughout this, and so you might have heard is the more real estate developer, which kind of sounds kind of scary, but it's really just me and my husband. We've lived here for a long time. We see a opportunity here that can help the town and something that'll be a fun project for us. We feel it'll be a big enhancement. You can change the slide. This is what I bought, embarrassingly. I wouldn't, I didn't want to tell my friends that I bought this, because it looks so bad. There is no desert on this property, as you can see, and, and it just, it looks pretty blighted. We've started to enhance it. I'm sorry, I don't have the painting done. I wanted to have it look all pretty with the painting before this, but the rain didn't help us out at all. But our plan, and we've already talked with, because we had to, in order to see whether this mixed use would work, we did have to talk with people for advice, so we've enlisted a local builder, Don Fredericks. We want this to be Cave Creek and to, to look really good, because we needed to make sure that everything would fit on the space properly. Next slide. So I know a lot of you ran on slow growth, and I know we all like slow growth. I've been on the preservation committee for the town of Cave Creek, and what slow growth really is, is a preserved land that we have in the back. We've got the Cave Creek Rock Park, thirty-three hundred acres there. We've got thirty-three hundred acres in Spur Cross, which I know Mr. Augurton worked very hard to get all that area annexed in order to do this. This is what we need to save. So maybe instead of saying we need to keep slow growth, we need to sustain slow growth. This costs money to keep all of this, plus we're in the town. Plus, we have a fire department to run now. We need tax revenue. At one point, we were able to, we were asked to have a Home Depot in our town, and people came up against it. Instead, it went right next door, so we had all the traffic and everything else. I estimated that there was almost four million dollars of tax revenue this year that we lost from their sales for two thousand and twenty-two, and that's a lot of money that could save a lot of land, that could pay for our fire, that could help for our upgrades. Only two percent of the land in the town of Cave Creek is on commercial currently. The area that I am talking about for the rezoning for the mixed use was in the general plan. It was already set aside by people, thoughtful people that took their time to decide where it would make sense to have additional commercial and revenue come in from the town, because the bars alone, you just can't do it for us. And there's Spur Cross in the back. Do you have it on your screens?
Yes.
Okay. Looking at my presentation.
For the audience, each of us has a screen here that we're watching, what you're watching up there.
I'm very proud of the fact that the council was able to find a way to give us a fire department without paying for taxes. Sorry, I just had that in my file. So if you look at the map of the town of Cave Creek, you can see the area that's green is our open space. There's four thousand acres in there left though from the state land department that we have a zoning overlay on, but we have to purchase, so we do have to find a way to do that. We do need money. You can see on the very bottom, maybe you can't, but the, but the property that we're asking for the rezon is way down on the bottom, and it's purple, which is already mixed use. And if you look at the properties around us, Abrazo Hospital is to the north. I did not know that the helicopter was going away. I didn't, I just heard that, you know, there was a meeting, so I didn't realize that that wasn't gonna happen, so I did put it in there that we would have a helicopter there. Big O tires is very noisy. They have air compressors. We have Sprouts Shopping Center and many restaurants. It's very loud from that, a lot of traffic. Next door is an art studio, which is a very nice property, but again, it's not really a residential property of the south is seeking a rezoning, and Kitty Corner is Tractor Supply. I don't know of any of my neighbors that are opposing of this. I've talked to the neighbor to the west, and he told me that he is in favor of it. It, it would just make sense to have a buffer property right now before you went into the residential, into a housing unit. Next slide. What our project will bring to the town, connections to the sewer, beautification to the neighborhood, homes for folks that can't afford to own in the area. This is not gonna be low-income housing. Somebody had mentioned that to me when I came into the meeting. It is not gonna be low-income, and I couldn't afford to put low-income housing if I wanted to. I don't want to. I mean, it has to sustain. It has to pay for itself. That's kind of the law of business. Tax revenue for sustainability of slow growth. It's certainly not anything that a Home Depot can bring you for tax revenue, but it's something certainly more than if it's just a single-family home. And then the water is the city of Phoenix, so you won't have to worry about using our water supply. What our project won't do, it won't destroy the desert. There's no desert on that property left. It won't destroy someone's western lifestyle or any type of lifestyle. It's not gonna cause neighbors to ration water. That was something that I heard going around, that if the apartments were there, then they would be able to use less water, but that, that's just not true. It's not gonna harm any desert wildlife. I can tell you, there's no wildlife that lives in that area, or at least on that property. There's nothing for it to live in. It's not gonna ruin the dark sky, because that was built in nineteen seventy-eight, so the lighting on it right now would not be compliant to dark sky, and I'm going to be upgrading that. And we're not claiming a historic district, which there is no such thing, but that's another rumor that was going around, that we're gonna claim a historic district, and I have to pay any taxes, but that's not gonna happen. This kind of just shows the area around it. Two parcels to the south is county. The zoning to the north, of course, is hardcore commercial. So, so south of me is county, and to the west of that is actually a lower zoning than what this house is. And normally, when you have zoning near a road like that, you, you take the density down. You, you don't have a high density like commercial, and then one house per single, and then you go down to something that's lower. You wanna, you wanna do your zoning so that it blends down, so it buffers everything and it fits in, and right now, this, this doesn't do that. If you look at this slide, and you look at the area, again, the parts that's in Cave Creek to the west, there's really not that many people when they leave that would even have to go past this building. It, there's just no reason for them to have to drive by it or feel that there's extra traffic from it, because there's other ways out. It, it would be out of their way to go past this building. Next slide. Also, the zoning and the subdivision to the south has been there so long that they even allowed mobile homes. So you're really going from commercial core, right now, you're going from commercial core to R forty-three, which would usually be more of a larger luxury home, because you can't have ranch use. This would just be a luxury home, and then down to an area where there are mobile homes and some other homes, but on a smaller than an R forty-three designated land parcel. I did quite a bit of research on this property. I did quite a bit before I bought it. This is an old two thousand MLS listing. This shows that it's always been leased for top and bottom. When this was built in nineteen seventy-eight, it was not built like a single-family home. You cannot get from the top floor to the bottom floor from the inside of the house. You have to go outside. And then there's a third unit that's your condition, that I can't show anything that it's been leased before, but it was definitely another unit of some sort. My guess is that maybe the owner lived in it, because I thought I heard rumor that the owner was out of state, and that he would come and stay there, and he, but he rented it out. It states on the top line that prior to renting this in two thousand, it was a bed and breakfast. So it has had commercial use. It also, when I bought it, was used as an office on the lower level, so it was, it was used for its commercial. No one has ever complained. I checked with the town. If there were any complaints at all with this property, and there never were. I have some water. So I'd like to say I thought that the commissioners for planning and zoning did an excellent job in their research for their properties, and I'm gonna copy what came up out of that meeting, because it was very impressive for what they said. On September twentieth, twenty-ten, the town council held a public hearing to consider the resolution adopting a major amendment to the general plan area eighteen that would amend the town of Cave Creek General Plan Land Use Map in the minutes of the meeting. Mr. Caldwell stated, "This is actually the third year that we met with the residents about coming through with the general plan amendment, and staff took on this area and actually enlarged it, because the neighbors were happy with it in two thousand and ten." They were able to, to pass this amendment with the town council, and it, the whole thing only took a minute for the whole meeting, because nobody came to object. The only person that did come and talk was for it, so when it was put forward in two thousand and ten, it passed. Then in two thousand and twenty-one, by an overwhelming majority of the vote, it, it passed. And the bottom line is that it hadn't been through. It wasn't like they just rushed it through. This had been talked and talked and talked and talked about and agreed upon, and everything worked out for it, which was why Don and I bought it, was because it just made so much sense to do it. It was already in the plans. We have a nice idea of what we're gonna do. We're gonna bring in tax revenue. This is the record that we have to go by, and as for us representing to the loudest voices in the room, that they might as well just throw this stuff out, because it just makes sense, and, and they passed it six to one. The town of Cave Creek needs a revenue stream. If we want slow growth, we have to pay for it, and that's just the fact. We have to allow some commercial properties. This is a property that was designated mixed use. There's only two percent of property in the town of Cave Creek that you can get revenue from. We've thrown away a very large one. We have to start looking at things. I think it's a, it just makes I think it's a, it just makes so much sense because it's not a high core commercial that we're seeking. It's something that will actually buffer and create a neighborhood feel. And that, that was why the down the downfall of the real estate market when everyone realized, because we almost lost our town. Steve Lamar gave a, an accounting of we were almost gobbled up with by Phoenix. We didn't have any money. We're very lucky to be here right now, but we need the money to keep sustaining the town and I've been here for a long time. I, it's not like I'm going to, I'm just coming here to just be a fly by night developer and leave. I'm a small time investor that's living in the town and I love the town. And there's been a lot of thought process through this. So as a longtime citizen of the town of Cave Creek, we see no reasonable reason why you would deny the zoning request. I thank you very much for hearing my case. Do you have any questions?
Questions from counsel. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Yeah, I really appreciate the, the audience being so respectful during that presentation, knowing how much feeling there is in the room. So thank you very much. I guess at this time we'll open the public hearing.
Richard Conley.
Thank you and thank you.
Mrs. Conley, we're going to, we're limited speakers to three minutes unless you're representing a larger group.
Just me. I live on 52nd Street.
Well, you're very welcome to be here.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and dedication to the community. I, I don't really have any problems with development, but it's the type of development and I do not want to see a transient community become part of Cave Creek. If you've lived here all your life, then you've missed some of the development that other communities have had. And typically when you get rentals, you get people that are more transient. And they have friends come and visit and they have friends and friends of friends that come and visit and some of the friends bring a little spray paint cans. And pretty soon it starts to look urban. And this happens when there are apartments. And I think if you contacted enough law enforcement people, you would find out that the problem areas tend to be around rented units. I would, if, if you want to develop that property, I think that owner occupy would be preferable. I, I don't want to see, like everybody else, I don't want to see more traffic and this and that. People do not use the shortest route to get out. They use the fastest route. So you have to realize that when the developer comes to you and says, well, this is the shortest way. They're going to go this way. They're going to go that way. They're going to go the fastest way and you need to realize that. And that's my objection. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Guaranteeds. Guaranteeds 5042 East Hankwood Circle, Cave Creek, Arizona. Good evening, esteemed mayor, vice mayor and council persons. For judicial economy, I am going to be speaking for many of the people in the audience here. If you would like a show of hands.
Yeah, let's see a show of hands and those are. It's a lot of people. Thank you.
I would request to exceed the three minute limit, but I promise not to bore you. For those who don't know me, I am guaranteed to reside in the Saguaro's residential subdivision. The proposed rezoning of the DR43 is located within one half mile of my home. Saguaro is one of the oldest original Cave Creek neighborhoods where single family homes are beautifully situated on three quarters of an acre or greater. Some of the residents have lived in Saguaro for more than half a century. It's a very long time. I first want to thank the council for their quick action with respect to the Abrazo helicopter. I do want residents to know that that is tabled. It is a non-issue. We don't have to worry about that right now. So I, I do thank you for your swift action on that. With regard to the applicant, I do have some issues with respect to that. The first being that our initial experience so far, our initial experience so far has not been favorable. On October the 31st, the applicant began construction without obtaining work permit. A stop work notice was issued. The applicant was cited and fined. On November 17th, the applicant appeared before the planning and zoning representing that the property to the east is an artist's studio. And he has told me he is fine doing this rezoning request. That's specifically at page 29, lines 1361 to 1362. It is not true. Carlos Page is here today. He is a nationally recognized artist who lives in that property. This is his live work studio and he will be speaking to that. This property directly abuts the subject property, which they are trying to change. On the same day, the applicant represented the planning and zoning that there is no neighborhood surrounding this property. Even the landscape business, which exists, is still zones DR43. And it too contains a single family residence. Saguaro is an area of single family homes. The majority of the people in the room at the planning and zoning meeting, which I would say were conservatively 75 or more persons, are residents living around that subject property. So to claim that this has no neighborhood is absolutely not true. The greatest area of mistrust came from the applicant's misrepresentations in their own words. They have never been clear about how many quote apartments and how many quote office buildings that they plan to put there. One of the reasons she applied for commercial buffer was because there is no numerical cap as to what she can do. That is part of what is wrong with commercial buffer. How many things can you cram on 1.4 acres of property? Especially when it abuts a residential neighborhood. At the planning and zoning meeting, there was discussion about the intent of commercial buffer. And Tim Anderson actually came out directly and asked the applicant how many units she planned to put there because if it was 13, he would contest it on the same grounds as our multi-residential of eight per acre. The applicant replied, this is a request for commercial buffer, which allows us to also do offices and I have an office component as part of that. Again, no answer as to how many of these apartments we could be expecting. So I reviewed the audio recording of the planning and zoning as well as the draft minutes that were submitted. The ordinance proposed tonight does not seem to meet with the November 17, 2022 motion made by Chairman Boris and seconded by Steve Lamar for the conditional uses of residential rents and commercial office spaces. I will touch on that a little bit later. The inclusion of commercial office spaces in the condition did mitigate some of our residents' fears and concerns. But now this has been taken away from us. We felt we had achieved some protection from general retail and higher traffic and walk-in trade establishments generating higher traffic in our neighborhood. Which is really contributing to the growing congestion problem that exists in that area. We had a fatality automobile accident in that area just a week ago, within the past week. Now, what we believe we had achieved insofar as some protections from that type of environment up against our residential neighborhoods. We've lost. We're now faced with dense housing in excess of our multi-residential zoning caps and the potential of active and sparsely regulated retail up against our residential neighborhood. We have previously discussed the issue of commercial buffer. The term was adopted into the town zoning ordinance in 1994. No truer words have ever been spoken than that by Chairman Boris on October 20th, 2022, when he stated, the term commercial buffer has been a source of consternation and concern on the part of some planning commissioners as well as members of the public. That is very true. There is a proposal on the table to consider a change to intermediate buffer. It therefore seems irresponsible to me for the town to consider, consider going forward with the term commercial buffer without some resolution as to what that really entails. The residents of area 18 are already in shock that there is a zoning classification that would allow high density apartments to be constructed in our neighborhood. It comes as an absolute bombshell to these residents that such high density was even possible. If you provide them with commercial buffer, there is no guarantee what this area is going to look like in the future. As it stands now, the applicant has three separate things going on within this same parcel. Three separate things. And there is no cap as to the amount of residential rental or commercial offices. And not even when she has been asked. Residents living south of the Carefree Highway have tolerated 19 upzoonings in our area, 19 upzoonings. We have sacrificed for the betterment of the town. There have already been strip commercial zoning changes down the Carefree Highway. They aptly belong there. We don't dispute that. Of the 18 original DR43 parcels originally included in the 2010 designations, 10 of these parcels have now been developed for commercial use. And there are only eight parcels remaining. But the residents are saying enough is enough without some clarification. The pending applications are poorly thought out. Mixed use doesn't allow for as many apartments as they intend to cram onto these properties. And the residents are not in agreement with this. We have a classification for multi-residential zoning. That is not what they've applied for. They have applied for commercial buffer. Therein lies some of our residents' fears. The town of Cave Creek is a member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers and I have obtained some specific numbers for your consideration. The current studies from the ITE reflect that in a single family residence neighborhood, an average of 9.4 car trips per day. Under a multi-residential zoning, each dwelling unit or apartment would have an average of 6.7 trips per day, per unit, coming out either on 53rd or Barbie. The intersection of Cave Creek and Carefree is so congested that drivers are now avoiding the intersections by using 52nd. 52nd has become a freeway to avoid the congested traffic signals. We now have three stop signs at the area of 52nd and Zenith, for which we are thankful, but the congestion continues. We now have tractor trailer rigs parked on 52nd Street. This is not only unreasonable, but the consequences of the congestion to traffic in that area and our lack of the infrastructure has been deadly now. There's considerable discussion about a low inventory of available apartments for town workers. The starting rent for these units is in excess of $2,000 per month. That has been stated by the applicant. That's not necessarily affordable, especially when cheaper rents are available at nearby desert hills and desert ridge, which did not exist back in 2010. The cost of the land in Cave Creek simply does not lend itself to affordable housing. One example is Galloway, which was supposed to be affordable housing. These properties are now selling for upwards of $800,000. Affordable housing has been an ongoing discussion for more than a dozen years. There were already apartment, parcel zone for apartments, condos and townhomes. Building on infilled vacant land already zoned commercial buffer and multifamily in our town could accommodate this new growth and serve as an alternative to sprawl development. The town has several parcels vacant at this time. For example, briefly, the Windmill Project, the Schoolhouse Cave Creek Road Project, Tamarisk Grove Project and 120 acres at 24th Street and Carefree Highway, which is currently zoned commercial buffer. Our residents want to keep a rural lifestyle to the extent that we can. We understand that change is inevitable and we want to do our part, but we don't want life to be awful for us. And that is what's forecast in this area. We brag about having a rural western lifestyle, but is there any brand loyalty to this? I know that Mr. Augerton, when he was asked to name the top three concerns in Cave Creek and how he might solve them, he referenced certain things that he would do. And one of his concerns was the impending risk of upzoning parcels and residential neighborhoods without accompanying inadequate ordinances and inadequate enforcement. I know Ms. Royer stated that she had residents expressed a desire to maintain low density development and our western heritage. And Mr. Rhodes, who is also new, talked about preserving our western heritage. The residents in that area are entitled to the same life that the rest of Cave Creek has. Back in November of 2022, the residents of area 18 circulated a petition just opposing the upzoning of this property and the Zen project, which would be directly across the street. In a short amount of time, we accumulated 400 signatures of Cave Creek residents opposing this rezoning application. This petition and its signatures read like the Who's Who of Cave Creek, which includes a former mayor, former town council member, former planning and zoning, current business owners, town adventurers and activists, and many of the faces of Old Cave Creek, some of whom who have lived in that area for more than a half a century. Now I want to bring this council's kind detention to ordinance number 02023-01, which is on the agenda for this evening. At pages 38 through 39 of it, of the town's agenda this evening is the conditional approval of the first reading for this rezoning application for carefree causes of Cave Creek. The conditional approval contained on January the 17th agenda is inconsistent with the motion that was approved on November the 17th. Residential uses shall be limited to residential rental units and commercial office suites. The verbiage commercial office suites was eliminated. At the same planning and zoning meeting, there was an application by Zen to rezone to commercial barter. A similar application for apartments. The motion was passed with respect to that also contained a conditional restriction to commercial offices. There is no reason why this developer's application would not have appropriately have the same conditions assigned to their application. I do not see that there was any amendment to the original motion. Chairman Boris called for a vote and it passed six to one in favor. It's important for me to mention that there were additional conditions applied to the Zen project, which in all reality and fairness should have also been attached to this applications project. And I fail to understand why they weren't. I understand that Zen is not on the ballot or excuse me, before you for consideration tonight. That's really not an excuse. For example, condition number two, where adjacent to residentially zoned properties, all improvements with the exception of landscaping, utilities and town approved pathways shall be limited to placement within this building setbacks. I do not know why that condition does not apply to this application. Condition number three, in addition to the landscape requirements per the town code and ordinance, a landscape buffer shall be included within the 25 foot building setback and shall include at a minimum 136 inch box tree every 30 feet.
Will, will, you'll have your chance to talk later to rebuttal, but we're going to give her a chance.
Will you have your chance to talk later to rebuttal, but we're going to give her a chance. Okay, thanks for the help, audience, but I can handle this. Janet, you'll have to sit Janet, you have to sit down and wait your turn.
Again, I don't know why these conditions do not appropriately apply to a very similar application directly across the street. The current verbiage refers only to residential uses. Are residents going to be assured that the only applicable use for this parcel will be solely limited to residential rental units? Because that is not how the condition of approval reads to me. Therefore, some careful thought and discussion needs to be had before haphazardly just zoning this to commercial buffer. Once the underlying zoning changes, there's no going back. In my observation, there are three ways to effect change for the betterment of the town in this area. One is to develop an S A P for area eighteen, which I understand the town council is considering and not necessarily inclined to do. I understand. I cannot help what occurred back in two thousand and ten. Most of us residents didn't even live here then. We can change the land use map. It's a possibility, probably a long stretch, but it is a possibility. We can create a better nomenclature and identification for the term commercial buffer. Also a possibility. When the town developed the S A P for north of the Carefree Highway, they really should have included the plan for south of the Carefree Highway, but this did not happen. So the only way for us to mitigate our concerns now as residents is for the town to address them before these changes happen. And we are left with no alternative but to oppose the change to commercial buffer. In closing, I know the question was posed as to what the applicant would do if her change to commercial buffer was currently denied. And a response was for her to wait a year and reapply. While waiting a year, she's collecting income from the three residential rentals that exist in the single-family home currently. So there is really no injustice. There's certainly no injustice in my asking for commercial offices to be added to one of the conditions because that is what her site concept plan calls for. She intends to put commercial offices there. And if that is her intent, there is certainly no injustice. And I do agree that the setbacks should be from the easement and not the property line. And I would respectfully request that you consider that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Ms. Moore. Ms. Moore, we'll continue with the with the audience and then at the end we'll allow you to come back up and rebut. Next speaker.
Julie Goldammer. Hello, Karen and I have spoken. I am going to take my three minutes and I apologize because sometimes when you really want to do a good job on behalf of your neighbors and on behalf of yourself, sometimes you're just not happy and you make a lot of scribbles in your notes. So I am Julie Goldammer. You've met me before. I live at the famous fifty-second Street, thirty-four oh-two-two North Fifty-second Street, approximately two blocks from the subject property. We, Mike and I, have lived in Cave Creek just for four years. We were not here in two thousand and ten. We have been at different pop-up sessions for the general plan. We have tried to be as involved as possible. I know I've spoken to several of you. I've been at different meetings. I'm not somebody that just comes. I'm not trying to be the loudest person in the room. I'm trying to collaborate here and give suggestions. In those pop-up sessions at the general plan, we did come up with suggestions on traffic flow and other items. And I have to tell you, I voted for the general plan, not realizing some of the little inconsistencies or loopholes. And Councilman Rhodes had just brought up consistency, and so I want to keep going with consistency. The three points or definitions I would like to address tonight are related to density, mixed use and commercial buffer. Because they all kind of fight with each other in our town documents. Namely, our general plan, the S A P and our zoning ordinances all kind of mentioned different things and different definitions. So let me give you an example. The general plan mentions density twenty-four different times in the document when you search it, but only once does it address what medium density actually is defined as, which Karen Teats already mentioned. Under an M R or multi-residential zoning, it defines it as eight dwellings per one acre, eight dwelling units per one acre. And I think we can all appreciate that that's probably okay. It's just the high density component that gets confusing. The other thing is mixed use. So area eighteen, which sounds like area fifty-one, you know, it just doesn't have a really good vibe. So maybe we could change that because we're not like green and glowing. But area eighteen is called mixed use. I come from a real estate background as well. And mixed use, and this is a very loose definition, is actually defined or described as a development with a single project planned to be consistent in look and feel to encourage pedestrian traffic and to purposely put residential retail restaurants, industrial and or commercial space together. It's done altogether. Think Kirland Commons. That's a mixed-use property, not area eighteen. Area eighteen unfortunately is being taken over. It's kind of almost a little bit of a it's a hostile takeover, let's call it. And lastly, let me talk about the fact that commercial buffer, which Karen has already gotten into quite a bit. Sorry, let me take two more seconds to close.
Go ahead. Finish your paragraph.
Commercial buffer is a buffer and it should be in the general plan. It's not mentioned anywhere in the general plan. Commercial buffer doesn't exist anywhere, not the words at all. So the loophole comes when we have people who come in and want to have commercial buffer, but they actually have a multiple residential and we call that eight. And this is an eight. And so what I would recommend is until we can better define commercial buffer and what that is defined to be, I ask that you consider putting this as an M R or a multi-residential zoning restriction on this particular applicant and not commercial. Because when you go to commercial buffer, it opens up to a whole bunch of other uses that could go in there if Ms. Moore decides not to continue developing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Johnson.
Hi, Mike Johnson, also on Fifty-second Street. And so, yes, Julie said, we've been in a few of these meetings, specifically when the hospital was being considered and looking for zoning changes for its development. And in hindsight, they acted with a lot of good faith. And they gave us a site plan. There was a lot of discussion about that site plan. They adjusted their site plan and how the traffic was flowing around that. It was appreciated. Now, this development and then the Zen property to the south, I'm not talking about the Zen property. It's just part of the context. Now it's, well, you've got the hospital there, so now we're going to put apartments in. That's just an extension of that type of development. They're not talking about the residential that's all on the other side of that. So they're more aligning themselves with the commercial development, not with the established residential development. So it's a bit disheartening to us that, well, you said okay to the hospital, therefore you should say okay to these apartments. And then the developers are like, we're doing you a favor by building these apartments. As residents in the area, we're not sure they're doing us a favor. With any of these considerations, I'm sure you're taking into account the interests of the town, the residents, and of course, the business owners of the town. Town doesn't live without the business owners. And that gets back to the idea of good faith. There's no site plans provided. We don't know what's really proposed other than just a concept. And if if me as a resident, a neighbor of this property, just base, take the personalities out of it, just what we're being, what is being discussed. I much prefer this Casa's Carefree over the Zen thing that was proposed before. Part of that is we've seen a site plan for Zen. And we don't like it. It's way too crowded. It's going to be a lot of overflow parking, not much consideration to the types of services residential neighborhoods need. But we don't know that about this Casa's Carefree development. We don't know what it's really looking like. With that, we could all be operating more with faith. And what what is it that we're talking about? What do we like about it? What do we not like about it as residents? What do they like? How can they be flexible as business owners? So wrapping this up, residents are left with no other tool than just to get loud and complain and say not know, but hell no, not in our backyard, because we don't really know what we're talking about. We don't know what's really honestly being proposed to us. And so as the residents, as part of this three-legged stool that runs the town, the town's business interests, us as residents and the business owners' interests, the right on that. You know, what is it that us as residents have to go off of other than just a few comments, some concepts? And what we really would like is good faith on all sides so we can really get a better understanding of what's being proposed and how it would honestly impact our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Jim Andrews.
I apologize, Jill.
Good evening. Jill Andrews, sixty-two fifty Markway. I am also a longtime resident of Cave Creek. I realize nothing stays the same. I don't think that's why we're here tonight. I don't think the support of these people here are to try to set something in stone and not accept the changes that we must. However, what is being proposed does not fit in residents in the neighborhood because it is a residential area. They don't want it. So we're, that's why we're all here this evening. But one of the main issues for my my concerns, we're having our privacy taken away. Nobody moved to Cave Creek to be we moved here by choice. We weren't kicked out of Phoenix or Scottsdale or any place like that. We chose to live here for a quieter lifestyle and to have privacy. And now you want or someone wants to put a two-story apartment building. Well, have has anybody ever lived next door to something that's two-story and you're one-story? Well, they're barbecuing tonight. Ah, what are they having? Oh, they're sunbathing. Oh, she doesn't have her top on. Hey. You know, that's what you're talking about here. You're talking about getting rid of our privacy. Why do you think we live out here? What brought us out here? So that would this is the subject matter has been covered very nicely by Karen and the other speakers. But I worked in Phoenix and I made the drive five and six days a week way before the roads were were four lanes and they would turn us loose at work when it was raining so that we could get home. Because it used to be, when it rained, you were either on that side or you were on that side and you couldn't get home. And so, yeah, we're going with the flow. We're flexible. But let's try to keep or not take away our privacy and put something in that doesn't belong there. And when you have an apartment complex, well, from dusk to dawn, it has to be lit up for safety reasons. And that, this has also been mentioned, you have to have enough law enforcement. Do we have the law enforcement to cover this? This apartment complex, the last meeting we were at, they mentioned it was going to be three bedrooms. Well, three times what? Twenty apartments, forty apartments? Times three? This is, that's too much, too many, too much, not safe and too many bright lights. Thank you.
Carlos Page.
I just want to state that I live full-time on the property adjacent to a proposal development. And I've been there for the past eight years and plan on being there for many years to come. Now I'd like to refer the rest of my speaking time to Carol Perry.
Thank you.
Carol Perry.
Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor and esteemed council, thank you for having me. My name is Carol Perry. I live at forty-nine forty-four East Sawmill Circle in Cave Creek. And I'm going to go slightly over three minutes, but I have a couple of people that have given me some time. Thank you, thank you, thank you. But I won't even hit six minutes, I promise. This segues off of just about everything else you've heard, and it's not very repetitious, I gather. In the summer of nineteen eighty-nine, majority of my neighbors in Saguaro West petitioned the Cave Creek Council to annex us into the town. Because we too, as Mr. Lamar put it so eloquently at the planning commission session, could see the writing on the wall if Phoenix were to annex us into the future. And we were thrilled when the annexation occurred in October of nineteen eighty-nine. And I have the certificate here signed by Jackie Davis, if anybody cares to see it. Because everyone was relieved to know that our neighborhood would be afforded the same protections of all Cave Creek residents living under desert rural living and zoning. Fast forward eleven years to two thousand. In September of two thousand, after months of working with dozens of concerned citizens and the town, I and the Cave Creek residents of Saguaro West came to Town Hall together to vote to approve our first and only property tax in order to complete the purchase of the Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area on the other side of town from us, but well within our line of sight. To our big surprise, not a single one of us was listed on the Cave Creek voter rolls and we were told to go to the Fine Art Center at the Cactus Shadows High School to cast our vote. Well, off we went to find out we weren't listed there either. With every indication that this election was going to be lost by a single vote or won by a single vote potentially, we refused to give up. My first call in front of witnesses to the Maricopa County Recorder's Office resulted in me being told, quote, "Check the prescription on your glasses, lady, because you obviously don't know where you live." It took a call from our vice mayor, Laura Cox, to the county recorder Helen Purcell to get the poll workers in Cave Creek to provide us with provisional ballots in order for us to cast our votes. It turned out to be a huge landslide, but we didn't know that going in. Fast forward another ten years. In two thousand and ten, I held and spoke at numerous neighborhood forums throughout Cave Creek in support of the original general plan as well as for Walmart, God help me, to generate much-needed sales tax revenue for the town. I took a lot of heat for that, as you all will know. We also keep Walmart in particular, we were told, and I repeated, would prevent wholesale development, massive rezoning because of the assured and continuous tax base that it would provide. Given my active involvement at that time in town business, I was surprised and disappointed to learn only recently, within the last week, that a general plan amendment was made later in two thousand and ten to place a mixed-use overlay onto area eighteen in my neighborhood and that there were no representatives of the public there at the time. I read that. Had I or we been aware, I surely believe that you would have seen significant input from the people in this neighborhood. We are a residential neighborhood inside the Cave Creek town limits. We have participated in numerous actions over the years that impact the well-being of all of Cave Creek. We never expected the properties bordering Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road to remain residential. We all recognize the appropriateness and the value for those properties to be zoned and used commercially. You've had no quarrel from us. We did, however, and still do, whether we bought our homes fifty years ago or two years ago, expect our neighborhood, which is not just a bunch of mobile homes at all, we are we are expected to remain desert rural zoning. We are homeowners, all of us, committed to living in peace and harmony within our homes and among our neighbors. We therefore are begging you to refuse the petition to rezone this parcel from Desert Rural forty-three to Commercial Buffer. One of your most acclaimed and upstanding citizens, fine artist Carlos Page, followed every permit rule that we have. And boy, do we have a lot of them. For over two years to bring his studio in line with our desert rural building codes. He doesn't deserve to be squeezed by an illegal commercial landscape business on his west side of Fifty-Second Street or a cluster of multi-residence units and possible commercial business on his east side of Fifty-Third Street. He's the only thing in the middle. Please protect all of us from the few who desire to turn a massive profit by procuring upzoning on our precious desert rural properties. We deserve the same key amenities living in Cave Creek provides everyone. Low noise, dark skies and desert mountain views. Respectfully, Carol Perry.
No additional speakers?
No additional speakers. Uh, well. Yeah, we're, we're going to take, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be right back in five minutes. At twenty after. Please come to order. Please come to order.
Mark Lau.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, esteemed council members. My name is Mark Lau. I live in Saguaro West also. I've been there since two thousand and nine. I've worked in Cave Creek for Cave Creek Unified Schools for the last eighteen years. And having been to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and sitting here this evening, you know, especially at the zoning meeting, there were three things that really came to mind for me. And one, Luke brought it to everybody's attention that while we're here for one parcel, really, we're here for all of area eighteen. So, you know, we've heard talk about, you know, uh, high-density residential. And I'm thinking not one lot. Because if this gets approved, then that's potentially the entire area. That was one thing that came to mind. The second thing, another one of the planning and zoning commissioners mentioned that he lived on New River Road. And as soon as he saw what Phoenix was planning, he moved deeper into Cave Creek. And I thought to myself, that's Phoenix. We're talking about Cave Creek. So you have control over what we're doing here. So, you know, those two things really kind of put it all into perspective. For me, we're not just talking one project. We're talking the entire area. And with a zoning change, it's not just going to apply to this one project. Eventually, it's probably going to apply to the whole area because, well, we have a Brazos, so we need this. And now we've got this high-density housing unit here, so we'd like to do this. And honestly, when I moved here in two thousand and nine, that wasn't what I had envisioned. I voted for the general plan. And going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, one of the commissioners, he wasn't even clear on what the general plan meant. He asked a lot of questions of Luke, you know, why I thought this was all right. I thought this was eight houses per acre. And I'm thinking to myself, I felt stupid for not understanding what I voted for. But then when I thought, well, one of our zoning commissioners doesn't even understand it. So with that being said, I mean, the idea of stepping back, taking a little time to reconsider what the verbiage is, what the language is, you know, I think people in here have been supportive of other projects. But had I known then what I know now potentially could have happened, I don't know if I could have supported that. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Gary Sprague.
This will be the last speaker. Except Ms. Moore.
My name is Gary Sprague. I live at three, four, zero, four, zero, North Cave, uh, North Fifty-Third Street. I am not a Cave Creek resident, but if I step off my property to the next property, I'm in Cave Creek. When Walmart came, I thought, great, now I, now I can walk to the store. When they wanted to put in tractor supply and AutoZone and all this stuff over there, we didn't complain. When they put in Dutch Bros next to us, we didn't complain. They've been great neighbors. Since nineteen ninety-four, when we moved here, we've enjoyed nights. I brag about the sunsets in our backyard. And listening to the presentations this evening, for, before I say that, once they put in some of those things, especially the Dutch Bros, we have a racetrack coming down Fifty-Third Street to the corner and guys wheeling around, spinning their tires. There's a huge mud puddle there and they splash all over, everything all over the place. And we've actually had one person come over, hit one of our Saguaro's on the corner of our property, damage it and then died. So we have endured that. And if you put a project like this in that same general area, you're going to get more and more of that. My real comment is, if you listen to people, you make an opinion of what they will and won't do. Here's what I say. The people who have represented all of the residents in that area have been well-spoken. They've done their homework. They've talked about things concisely and clearly. The presentation before the residents, it was a haphazard. All we want to do is try to tell you, you're going to make more money because of us. And at the zoning meeting, this, the, one of the zone, the zoner who voted no said, "I would really like to see some drawings of what you're planning to do here." So taking those two, I would take the residents just on how they present themselves. And that's the way I would vote. Yes, for them. Thank you very much for your time.
There's more? And you'll have more than three minutes. You need, you have the time you need.
Okay, so there's a lot of misinformation that's being told, and it's unfortunate. I'm going to try to go over all of it, but these are my notes, so please have patience. First of all, I don't have a plan to bring forth. I'm going for a zoning change right now, not to approve a plan. The reason why we're doing it this way is because it costs a lot of money to do the plans. I don't have all that money to go ahead and do that and then get turned down. So I'm going for the zoning change first. Now I have an idea of what I want to do because I had to make sure that cost-wise it would make sense. So I know a little bit about what I want to do, but I have to come before you again with a plan, with the correct setbacks, with the correct vegetation, with the correct height and have you approve it. So it's not like, it's not like it can be anything. It's not like you give the zoning and they can do whatever they want. No, there's a limit of the size. There's a max that can be put on a parcel because of the rules that they have on building. And I'm fine with that. Okay. And that's, that's how we did our conceptual plans that I did pay a lot of money for. I'm working with Don Fredericks. I'm, I'm trying to make sure that this is Cave Creek-ish. I don't know if you all know Cave, Don Fredericks, but he's done some beautiful projects in the town. As far as a two-story, the height limit for the town of Cave Creek, I think it's like twenty-five feet or twenty-three feet. So whether it's one-story or two-story, you're allowed that height limit. So I'm not asking for anything higher. It could be a one-story and still be that height. And as far as looking in somebody's backyard, the only backyard we're going to be looking into would be a Brazos Hospital. We're not going to be looking in anybody in Saguaro West. They're more than a half a mile away from this property. They're a half a mile away from the Zen property, but they're more than a half a mile away from my property. Which, by the way, you haven't heard the Zen property, but they, they unfortunately, they put this proposal together and they were in the same zoning day as I was. And it had like a gazillion houses on there with three bedrooms. I don't have any three-bedroom units. I have plenty of parking. I actually did a plan with a surveyor and with a builder that would make sense. We still have to come before you and we have to make sure it's going to work. But I'm not, I'm trying to put, you know, they, they had the backyards and the setbacks. That was why one of the, one of the requests was they have to do box trees or whatever. I don't, I didn't submit anything like that. I'm not, all I'm asking for is a zoning change right now. My proposal to do it will be for commercial slash apartments. Now, the difference between MR eight and apartments, and, and this is why people are getting confused. MR eight is single-family housing. MR eight would be like Galloway Ridge or something like that. That would be, I think it's eight houses per acre. That's MR eight. It's not, it's not multiple family. Multi-family is commercial. So that's where the, where the confusion gets. Oh, she can only have eight per acre. Well, that would be completely different. That'd be a subdivision. That's completely what they don't want me to do. And I want to do it either. No transient people. I've been a landlord since nineteen eighty-five. I have done all my own management. I have a lot of my own resources to look people up before I even run a credit report. I'll know whether or not I'm going to take somebody or not. I don't have problems because of, I spend a lot of time selecting who I'm going to bring in. The, the thing that's floating around that, oh, if you give her MR eight or mixed use, then everybody's going to want mixed use. Well, that would be like saying if the hospital's commercial core, then I would get commercial core with that premise. I mean, I'm not asking for commercial four. So I can't help it with somebody else is going to ask. That's their right to ask, but it's not fair to punish me because they're afraid somebody else is going to ask for it. You have to do a case by case. That's the way it needs to be done. And the speaking for many, a lot of people in here are most likely from the county, so they don't have to give address. I know on the petition, a lot of people are from the county. There are people that signed the petition. The people, some of the people on the, on the petition were from Peoria and Scottsdale. Some of them signed twice. Many of the people I knew, for instance, Mayor Francia, I called them because Mayor Francia voted this to be put in and in twenty-ten before they moved here. They even said before they moved here, he voted for it. And he told me, which I figured was the case, that he felt pressured. He was at a, a party. He was at a, a very small Christmas party. And Ms. Perry, who was a very good friend of his, asked him to sign it. And him and his wife felt uncomfortable not signing it. And if you know Mayor Francia, you know that's the truth because he does not like to make people feel bad. So I knew it when I called him that that was going to be, I didn't, it was Carol that was at the, the other thing about the petitions, which is kind of funny, which they, they don't really mean anything. But you could have been signing up for a softball game to play in a softball game. There was nothing on the top of the forms of what they were signing up for. So who knew what they were signing up for? It was just interesting. So.
Okay, I'm going to ask, I'm going to, audience, we've done really well so far. Let's not have any comments from the, from the audience, please.
Carlos, Carlos did come up here and he said his name, but he didn't say he was in opposition. Are you going to say that you never told me that you were in a?
Ms. Moore, no, you may not. You're going to have to address the council.
Well.
And, and I'm going to ask the, the audience to please, it, it probably isn't material.
Well.
Who told who what? Uh, we have issues here. Let's stick to the hard issues.
Thank you. But it is an issue for the fact when somebody comes up and says, "I completely lied," which was not true. I did not lie. I had a confirmation, a confirmation conversation with him. If he's changed his mind, maybe he's changed his mind. I don't know. But our conversation was he had no problem with it. He was surprised I was going to keep the building there because he thought it was ugly. And it was. And as far as getting, uh, doing work without a permit, I stuckoed that. Are you kidding me? Did you see that building? I was afraid it was going to rain right into the, I couldn't wait to get it stuckoed. I didn't know you needed a permit for it. The town said I needed a permit. I didn't know. So that's just not polite. All right. I don't like me being accused of lying. I did not know I needed a permit. I would have gotten a permit ahead of time. I couldn't get the stuckoed until I had the windows put in and it took me like three months to get those windows. So I would have stuckoed that the day I bought it, if I could have, without putting those windows in. There was no lying. There was nothing that was untruthful. I found out I needed stucco and I got, or permit, and I got it. End of story. That was it. Now, when I bought this property, I did my due diligence. And I looked to see what, what it was owned. And I looked to see that it was already classified as a mixed-use zoning to help pay for the costs of things in the town. I'm sorry that some of the people that moved in afterwards did not do their due diligence and look into this. But it was there for them to see as well, and they could have looked into it before they purchased it. I don't feel it's fair that they tried to hurt my character personally because it's not about that. This is just about the property. I think that's fair to say. The fact of commercial buffer and intermediate zoning, there's not going to be any difference. They're just changing the name. They're not changing what it does. They're not changing. They're not changing what the definition is. Just too many people were confused with commercial buffer, so they want to change it to intermediate. So there's, there's nothing to wait on for that. The only difference it would be is if you, if it was commercial buffer today, everything on the zoning map is going to be changed to intermediate. That's all that's about. As far as the traffic, the traffic was already calculated when they put the light in at Fifty-Third Street because they knew that this area was going to be mixed use. So they already had that calculated for that intersection. I already told you, it's not, I have no three bedrooms in there. So I guess that's it. Are there any questions from any of you?
Counsel, questions? No questions.
Okay. So please remember, I have nothing to do with Zen. I don't, I'm only coming before you as a zoning change. I'm coming for a zoning change that was part of the plan, was part of what nine hundred and seven people voted for, for the general plan. They voted for it. They're not in this room right now. But they voted for this. They've already approved it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. The hearing is now closed and we will proceed back to council. So we'll open it for comments, discussion. Counsel. Yeah. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll do that. Motion to approve first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one and ordinance of the mayor and the council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving case Z dash twenty-two dash zero-three. Carefree Casa of Cave Creek, zone change request amending the town of Cave Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zone of a parcel totaling approximately one point four zero acres located at the northwest corner of Barbie Lane and Fifty-Third Street from a desert rural DR forty-three zone to a commercial buffer CB zone.
Second. Well, I'm going to second it because we need to discuss this. So we'll, at council now for discussion.
Okay. Area eighteen is an interesting thing. That was, that came about after the great recession and the reason we did that was, was for, for revenue producing. Properties were to, to change those to stuff that brought money. So when I first heard about this project, I absolutely was, was against it. And I'll tell you why. Because I would rather see a high, a high traffic. Business there with cash registers because that's more appropriate for what we had in mind when we changed it. I see both sides of the issue. And to me, going with, with, with CB at this stage of the game actually is tapering down from what could be there, which is, is a high, high traffic. Retail business to something that's not. So I'm actually going to be in favor of this.
I had the second, so I'll take a second. Comment here. A, a, and Luke, it raised a question. There's all this confusion about the number of apartments. What's the scoop on that?
Sure. Mayor Morris, members of council. Currently, so that if Brian can maybe bring that map back up, this might, this might help me illustrate my. Statement here regarding that. Of our land use classifications, we have four desert rural land use classifications. Two medium residential classifications of which the Saguaro West subdivision is, is within one of those medium residential land uses. We have a multiple residential land use. Prior to this general plan that was approved in twenty-twenty-one. This land use classification was referred to as high density residential. And high density residential is capped at eight units per acre. This area, area eighteen, as well as area ten to the north. To the south, sorry, to the south and west of this, were given mixed use land use classifications. The reason for that was to allow for. Consideration of any zoning district or any zoning category that came forward at such time. In the future to allow council the flexibility to consider those requests. The reason this isn't capped at eight units per acre, once again. Deals to the fact that both the land use being mixed use doesn't have a cap of eight units per acre. Only the multiple residential land use category does. Now, those multiple residential land uses are found within the town core. Most recently, the. The windmill apartment development, which is just starting to break ground, is four acres. They're proposing thirty-two units. And. Also, since the commercial buffered zone doesn't have a, a cap on units, which is of note because. The last time the town went in and, and started changing classifications and uses. Specific to the commercial buffer zone was after the annexation agreements were done and consummated with the state land department. The state land department. Notified us that removing multiple residential units from the commercial buffer zone. Would result in a potential Prop two oh seven claim. As it would be a diminution of value of state land. And as you recall, and, and as we've discussed. The, the whole premise of the annexation agreements to annex and preserve lands within Rogers Wash. Willow Springs and Apache Wash. It was essentially a trade with the state land department. The town rezoned and gave them more density and intensity along Carefree Highway. Between twenty-eighth street and thirty-second street in exchange for quite a bit of open space to be preserved in those areas. So I think that's, that's part of the, the issue is the general plan identifies multiple residential as a land use. Our zoning ordinance and hindsight's always twenty-twenty, our, our zoning ordinance has a multiple residence zone. Anybody that rezones to a multiple residence zone. Would, would need to fall under that land use classification of multiple residential, which has a cap of eight units. So. It's not, it's not applicable to this case.
Okay. Other questions and comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to mention the windmill house because it's been discussed a few times this evening, if you'll indulge me, not that it's related to this case, but. That was, and I say was because it's mostly been torn down, but that was one of our original homesteads here in the Cave Creek area. And it would have made a great visitor center or annex to the Cave Creek Museum or kind of an entry relationship with people coming in to the community. For visitors. Ms. Moore was the listing agent, I believe, on that property and Mr. Bunch was. Working with that property when it changed zoning at the last council. And I understand change, I understand growth, but this is how Cave Creek changes one parcel at a time. Each case, you know, measured on its own merits. But the windmill property, and now we have the screening going up around it, so it won't, the defoliation won't be obvious to the people that live, live here. Same thing happened to the center of Cave Creek, the twenty-six acres of the kite family slated. To create the projects that's there. They had Galloway Ridge and so forth. But if there's any way to just try to, and I'm not supposed to be giving a speech here, but. As these properties come forward for zoning changes. If ever there's a possibility, and I know the town would have to oftentimes purchase. But if we could just try to hold on to a little bit of the essence of what the town is all about. Maybe not section eighteen is not as historic or, and so forth, but the windmill property, I just have to. Give a public lament for it because it had so much potential, but the timing was not there. The money was not there and the opportunity no longer is there. So when you come in from Carefree, you're going to drive into our town and look down on a flat roof full of air conditioning units. And that's going to be one more stucco box that we're using to provide a needed service, but not in a way that seems to. Best serve our aesthetics and our history and our desire to be a tourist resort town. So. I don't have any, any substance on that, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, I just wanted to plug the windmill property. That's all.
Other comments? Well, we're past that time. I'm sorry. Okay, noted.
A lot changes over time. Two thousand and ten, this council decided that area eighteen should be zoned differently. In all those years, we have Walmart now and we have all sorts of commercial development on Carefree Highway. And we have generated plenty of revenue from that. And I think that it's time to stop and breathe. And respect the residents who live in that area. I think they've been impacted greatly by Abrazo. And by all of the new shopping centers that are being built along Carefree Highway. And there are too many unknowns in this plan. There's too many inconsistencies. There are too many variables. I don't understand why the condition wasn't applied to this project, perhaps just because of the size. But that should have been explained and it was eliminated from this proposal for some reason that we're not sure of. And for those reasons, I think that we need to put a hold on this project. And that doesn't mean that Janet made a bad choice in purchasing this property. Janet's an exceptional realtor and her family has followed in those footsteps. And I respect her for all of her success, but not, not to the detriment of this neighborhood. I believe in this neighborhood. I helped put that stop sign up on Barbie, even though it might not be working as best as it should be. Believe me, it took a lot just to get that stop sign. But you know, you all have your homes there and you do deserve dark skies as, as much as possible that we're on the border of Phoenix. But I, I don't think I could approve this knowing how much is at risk. And so that's how I feel.
Other comments from council?
We are generally told that we need to support the general plan. And if we don't support the general plan, in this case, when are we going to support the general plan? So I think that the. We should be doing that and I think that the. Proposal by Ms. Moore does conform to the general plan. I will support it.
And I'm going to say that I, I really concur with what. Councilperson Royer is saying. The more Realty Group is a real contributor to our town and has been. But in this case. There is a precious little neighborhood and. I can't really tell what that proposal is about. In, in a detail that helps me understand what the net result will be. So. It's going to be hard for me to support this.
Rhodes?
So I know that Ms. Teets in her statement asked that we take a look at what to do with area eighteen. I would suggest that. No matter what happens on this vote. That we take the planning commission to work with the staff. And try to figure out what is the right thing to do in, in this area. Because it's not just this property. There are still seven other properties, one way or the other. They're going to go through this. Let's figure out what, what. The folks there can live with. Can it be? Single-story offices? Can it be, you know, medical offices? Can it be something? Let's just have them have the planning commission, go back and figure out what's the right thing to do overall for this area before it comes back to us.
I concur with that, although I think it should be an open meeting rather than just the plan commission.
I think, I, I mean, the planning commission going out and talking to the neighborhood. The neighborhood has to have buy-in on this.
Absolutely. They need to be a part of the discussion.
I, I'm really struck by the analogy to the SAP plan. We had a plan that was approved by one group of people. And then ten or fifteen years later, it comes up and I think those time delays. Between some of these. Return, it's a change of people, there's a change of neighborhoods. To the extent that can be done contemporaneously would probably. Result in. A, a better result because there's, there's win lose here. The one side's going to win, the one side's going to lose. So you always hate to see that. When you have honest people coming together with their opinions.
I, I do, I don't think we want to do a special area plan, at least according to the, the folks I've talked to down in, in Phoenix. A special area plan means we're going to develop that area. So it's going to be, end up being commercial and I don't think that's what we want. So we want the planning commission. Working with the folks that live out there to figure out what the right solution is. Because we are going to have to do some things in there because it is mixed use. Well, what mixed use can they live with? And that's what I think. I think that is kind of.
I don't think that we should go into it with the end in mind.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying the planning commission should work with the residents to figure out what the right answer is.
Other, any last comments before we vote? I guess we'll vote now, the roll call.
Councilmember Augurton?
This is chairman, I love that.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkhla?
No.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
No.
Vice Mayor Roy?
No.
Mayor Morris?
No. And, and I'd like to, to thank the audience. This has been the, the audience is the size that I've seen in ten years of going in these meetings. I, I want to congratulate you on generally the politeness shown on both sides. We didn't have some of the things that go on in other meetings. So thank you very much and we'll move to the next agenda item. Council discussion approval authorizing town manager to complete the purchase of a fiscal year twenty-three utilities department crane truck utilizing existing state procurement. Contracts or other best available pricing that meets the town's procurement needs for an amount up to one hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Could I ask those who are leaving to? Conduct their conversations outside. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The action item before you tonight is a request to make a vehicle purchase for the utilities department. Let me give you a bit of a background. So currently we have a, a service body truck that we include in part of our maintenance group. That's actually a three-person group that actually does most of the maintenance for our facilities, both treatment plants and our remote facilities. It's a two thousand and seven vehicle that was actually, it's due up for replacement as part of our replacement program due to the age of the unit and its condition. During last year's budget process, we asked actually, get some additional funding to allow us to upgrade that unit to a crane truck. So we do have one crane truck currently in the maintenance group. It's a two thousand and eighteen vehicle. But having a second crane truck would be more useful for us because then it allows the staff to work independently and this would be slightly larger crane vehicle. So what we've done is we've reached out and asked for some quotations. It's a little odd because we're not asking for a specific purchase tonight. We're asking for the authority. A little bit of background is the vehicle market has been exceptionally difficult the last couple of years. When we came forward last year to do vehicle purchases, we asked for just council authority to allow us to use existing state contracts to make those purchases happen. While in your package tonight, you actually will see a, a quotation from a courtesy Chevrolet for a vehicle. They will not. Secure that quote for us until we can give them a PO. So we're in an odd situation. So that we've actually reached out to them last week was last time we talked to them. Vehicle chassis was still available. We haven't reached out to them after long weekend, so it might not be available. So we're asking for council authority to, to. Not make this specific purchase, but to give us the authority to make the purchase, the, the town manager to approve that. The other thing that's happened is when we originally put this into our budget request last year, we based it on what we purchased just last year's was two diesel service body. One-ton pickup trucks for the utilities department. Those vehicles cost about sixty-five thousand dollars apiece. Reaching out to vendors, they said add another twenty thousand dollars to add the crane component, which includes the outriggers and the crane assembly itself. Well, now we're actually looking about another fifteen thousand dollars more than what we anticipated. And that's just the market conditions. So these are state contracts that are allowed to renegotiate every year in pricing. So we're, we're sort of with the, the, the market as we have. So we, we budgeted eighty-five thousand dollars. We're looking to bridge the gap, the fifteen thousand dollars by using existing operational dollars, maintenance dollars, because this will be a maintenance vehicle for the town. So we're hopeful that you agree that if you can give us the authority, then we hope the chassis is still available as of tomorrow when we can issue the PO and actually secure this and then. The, the upfitting would, would then proceed to this point. We're just buying the bare chassis. You'll see there's two quotations, courtesy Chevrolet and the other vehicle, the other quotation is actually what they're referred to as the upfitting, actually putting on the body and the crane onto the back of the unit. So. With that, I can answer any questions. But you know, at this point, we're just asking for council authority to allow us to make this purchase, give us a little bit of flexibility due to the market conditions. If this chassis is gone, then we still have your authority to go out and find another one, hopefully in the next few months before the end of the fiscal year.
Questions from council?
None. I'll make the motion.
No, seeing no questions?
Motion to authorize the town manager to complete the purchase of FY twenty-three utilities department crane truck. Utilizing existing state procurement contracts or other best available pricing that meet the town's procurement code for an amount up to one hundred thousand dollars.
Second. All those in favor? Call the roll. Thank you.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkhla?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
I.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Councilmember Augurton?
Mayor Morris?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. You got your truck. Item number three, last item on, excuse me. Yes, item number three, last item is presentation and council discussion regarding the fire station remodel project initial design review.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jim Ford. I'm your director of community risk reduction. I've been working on these projects for a couple of years now. I have Gerald Adams, who's our primary architect. We hired him. He's with Perman. If you recall, just not too long ago, we entered into a contract with Perman to tell us what we could and couldn't do with the fire station that we purchased to bring it up to speed and up to current standards, current National Fire Protection Association standards. We wanted to bring you at least word about 30% of design right now, and we're almost ready to go out for bid for contractors. And before we did that, we wanted to at least give you an opportunity to see where we're at and what we've come up with for that particular station. This is a remodel. It's not a new build. If you recall, those of you that were here, this started in early 2021 is when I initially got the costs and the prices for purchasing. We had three options. We had the option to person exist, purchase the existing station and remodel it. We had an option to purchase a vacant building and almost completely rebuild that, or we had an option to buy new property and purchase and rebuild a fire station or build a brand-new fire station. We looked at all of those costs that came before council. The decision was made to purchase the existing building, which we did as of January of last year. And we've since hired and have an agreement now with Perman Architects to look at that and see what we can do for the remodel of that. But again, the numbers we initially have in the budget and are currently in the budget were initially designed starting in early 2021, so almost two years ago. So the goal is the council action says was to have a complete or an updated fire station that meets National Fire Protection Standards. Like I said, we're at 30 to 30% design, but we haven't gone out for bid yet, and that's going to be the next step. We'll put out an RFP for bid, and we'll start seeing what we can get for prices. But we wanted to bring this before you to first. And so kind of as as we go through this, Gerald will help me go through the the design, but kind of a couple of things to remember is where we've been working from is what can we get done for the money that has already been approved, which was approved several years ago? Or and what different projects or how can we phase this potentially phase this project to make sure we end up with the final result that we want to? So Brian, if we could bring up the first overview. And I believe you have this in your packets. What you see is, and I'll let Gerald help me with this stuff, but what you see, that's the original site plan and the original station. It's just a little bit less than an acre that we're putting this on, but that's that's what we were dealt, that's the hand that we were dealt. It was originally a car wash and from a car washer got remodeled into a fire station in 2005. And then from that, we bought it as a remodeled car wash fire station, and now we're trying to turn it into a real fire station. Next. This is the original or current plan for the building. This is the current floor plan. As I said, as we use it as we have to the north side or the top of the page is a drive-through, which used to be the vast car wash. That's the where they're currently storing on the engine and then the brush truck and the other trucks are stored under the canopy to the south. But that in the back was not filled in there. That's a drive-through. We're going to end up needing that space for for living areas. And you see, all they did was make one living room, put in some bunk rooms and a bathroom and still use that back area. So what we've done and what Gerald has done is we've taken and we've taken the available space that we have. The goal was not to extend or to do as little extension as we could on the existing building. And so we've taken that existing space, and the next plan that you have there is the changes, and I'll let Gerald kind of go over some of those changes for you.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's a pleasure to be here. This has been a project that's got a lot of love in it. The city really has been waiting for this to happen in this town, and we're excited to be a part of it. So what we want to do is be as fiscally responsible as possible and approach this in a way that we would feel that if it was our money, how we would address that. So what we did is like Jim Ford said, we took this this facility and said, what can we use? What bones are good? What can we use? Let's not add to the footprint with the exception of the apparatus base, which didn't work as a car wash. They have them stacked side by side. We were putting all kinds of carcinogens into the building. We're exposing firefighters to things that we didn't want to expose them to. So we quickly abandoned that approach, and we approached that to be the living side, and we're adding new additional bays that are appropriately designed with full exhaust evacuation, NFPA requirement guidelines, and then upgraded the living side of the fire station to meet all the gender-neutral specifics, unisex design facility, so we can have male, female, universal shifts coming in. We don't have to worry about, oh, we can only have two females and four males, so on and so forth. So this is a totally gender-neutral facility. I mean, all the ADA compliance, all the latest technology when it comes to carcinogen mitigation, things like that. So what we did is we took that area where the drive-through is, where the old tunnel was, and we made that the new living quarters. That's the clean space. That'll be the areas that we'll use for the new dorms. We allows us to put exterior windows, which we need for egress and for ventilation along the north side or on the the west side of the building, which we need to have. It's easy to to knock holes into those walls versus come on the inside. Then we revamped the inside to be more of an open concept in the center space. We don't need the doors and windows. And then the front where the public is, we dressed that up a little bit to give it the character that is right for Cape Creek. And we'll show a little rendering of what that looks like here in a moment. Right? So this basically is the full floor plan as it's developed after we do the remodel. So the the one before with the red, all the red was the existing walls and structure and things like that that we would be addressing and manipulating through in this within the station to make this plan. This plan is what it looks like when we're done with the complete build-out. This is the plan. As you can see, there are direct responses to the apparatus bay. We were able to include the fitness exercise area, which is very important in the firefighters. We know that they have to stay. They have certain requirements. All that's written in the contracts that they have to maintain their physical fitness to to serve us. We need them to be there. We've moved all the dirty components into what we call a red zone and the dirty zones. We have transition zones, which are yellow zones, and then we have clean zones, which is our green or living areas, which are carcinogen-proof. So that's why you've seen the the reconfiguration of the fire station, looking at this holistically to make sure that we've addressed all these for the citizens and the firefighters and everybody that's going to be going to the station on a regular basis.
And again, when you look at this finalized plan, the only real addition or the major addition is the bays on the south side. The existing footprint is still the existing footprint. There's just a couple of minor little adjustments to to square off the building and to add one of the big additions that we had to do was a ADA bathroom. This facility requires three bathrooms, one of which has to be ADA. They currently don't have an ADA bathroom in there. So that's the one other addition to this facility, that the footprint is an ADA bathroom. And we're putting it next to the other two bathrooms over there. You can see it on the right side of paper. So we don't have to dig up and get extra plumbing and extra sewer water sewers taps and things like that. We're putting it where it already is so we can minimize the impact on the structure.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Firefighters aren't going to be using the ADA. Please, why do you have to have an ADA bathroom?
Because it is open to the public.
Yep.
Same with the entry. We have to have a general blood pressures. People come in, just walk-ins and things like that. There's a whole lot, a lot of reasons.
Yeah, there's two things actually additional to that. That's true. If anybody comes in, if there's a service provider that comes in, it's ADA, they have to use the restroom. We have to offer accommodations for everything, but really, the code says if you build a public building, it must be ADA compliant, and the DOJ will sue the city if we do not meet ADA compliance. So really, the only thing that you're going to see in this facility that looks ADA is a shower and a two-inch-high toilet in one space. Everything else we can design to have the facility, and then we would ever know this 100% ADA compliant, but it will be. But we don't have to trace on that without a code amendment. And even if we get a code amendment, the federal government, if they came in and did an audit, they would they would stick it to all of us. So we we didn't want to really go down that road.
I just wanted to know why.
Yeah, yes, sir. No, it's a it's a very long debate that we have often.
Mayor and Councilman Rhodes, I've been building fire stations for a lot of years, and I've challenged the national federal guidelines. And I said, we don't have any ADA firefighters. Why do we need and just to your point? And it doesn't matter because it's a public facility. So we lost that, lost that battle several times.
So you have a third bathroom?
So we had to add the ADA third bathroom, and it's supposed to have anyway, do the number of people that are there. There's the six full-time, eight full-time people now, plus we have additional staffing during the time of high fire danger. We put the additional brush trucks on, so it requires those facilities.
It will get used in this design.
And remember, these people and these firefighters are living in this facility. It's not a we're in here for eight hours a day and going home. They're here, they're living in this facility, so you you need more than one shower. You have that many people coming back from those types of incidents. Next, next one, Brian.
So Jim, slip into the next page. Basically, we just want to give you a real review. This is the elevations as it sits today. If you look at, you know, from Cave Creek Road, what you basically see is the one on the top. The other two sides, if you're looking from the north-south and from the south-looking north of the two in the middle, and then the west side that we talked about, where all the new dorms will be is the one on the bottom there. So as you can see, it's it's just a basic block building, a pretty simple form, pretty simple structure. We embrace that, and we'll show you how we've dressed that and made it Cave Creek style here in just a moment.
And if I can make one additional comments about moving the bunk rooms into the area that we're going to and putting those windows in there. You're required for sleeping areas to have by the building code and by the fire code, the next at a secondary window, secondary exit. The current facility does not meet current building code, current fire code. Because they're in, they just stuck them in the middle of the building, and they didn't do anything to to get them into that those bays. So it doesn't need, it's not a safe, safe building at this point. The only thing that saves it is it's a fully sprinkled structure. Brian?
So again, this is probably a little bit easier to see in your packets or up close, but basically, what we try to do is everything in red was the existing building. We want to kind of give you some context and understand where we were adding and taking stuff away from the building. We call addition by subtraction in some regards. But the red is the existing building, and then the black line work is what it would look like if we'll build out. We're going to get a little fancy here in a minute. We're actually going to show you a full 3D rendering of really what it's going to look like. But we want to explain why we did we did and how we captured this existing structure at the most cost-effective approach that we could. We want to be fiscally responsible to to the town in this particular project. Right? So this is basically standing, if you're standing around the corner of Cave Creek, looking back to the north northwest. This is what you'd see. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the three apparatus bay. That's actually the new structure. Everything from that line to the right is existing structure with the exception of like Jim said here, that little pop-out where the sign is over there where the right cars parked. And then we brought in a little bit more of a front porch to signify the public entrance and to notify this is a public building. There is a a common entry point that goes in and then feeds into the offices and the services that are right inside the front door. So again, this is looking kind of from the south-looking north northwest at the building, at the new structure that we've added in, and we've blended into the existing design. It was currently there for the car wash. And then the next slide will basically look at basically straight on, maybe looking a little bit south to southwest-ish, and you can see the whole structure and how we tried to embrace the existing structure but bring a little bit better architectural facade and what we feel is appropriate for the area to represent the town and also the fire department and for the many people that it's going to serve in the future as we move forward.
And and I'll kind of wrap the discussion up and and open it to questions for you. Is when we first did this in 2021, early on, and it went into the 2021-22 budget. What was budgeted was a total of $1.45 million. Four, seven, five, I'm sorry. And so out of that, the initial cost that we've incurred is for Perlman's and the architects, and that was 254,000. So in essence, we have $1.2 million left to rebuild this. That number came about after dealing with the contracting industry and the construction industry was to initially was $215 a square foot, which was the going cost at the time before the COVID, before everything else. Recently, what's scary to us, and this is why we don't have a number for you today, and we won't have a number for you until we can go out to bid. What's scary to us now is, I think it was a surprise, or Wickenburg just built a fire station and it cost them $550 a square foot. The costs of getting the materials, the cost of getting the people has gone up dramatically. We don't expect ours to do that as quite as much, but we also don't expect it to be $2.15 a square foot like it was when it's what it's were done. So that's why we're looking at, can we phase this and what are our other options still? But you know, the the bay area, I know that's an addition. I know that's a big addition. But you also just spent almost a million dollars on a fire engine and a brush truck. So we can leave them outside under canopies, or we can put them in and protect the base and protect your investment. So there's a lot of, still a lot of moving parts. Any of that stuff, obviously, we'll have to come back to you. But our next step, if if you're okay with what we've done so far, our next step would be to finish the request or proposal and go out and see what we can get from the contracting industry, you know, because we're at 30% plans now, almost 50% engineering. And we can go get some initial cost estimates at this point. We couldn't do that before we had an initial design, before we knew what we were going to do for this facility.
Well, we can't turn back now.
It's kind of like I told you last time. It's it's never getting any cheaper. It wasn't getting any cheaper to buy the buildings. It wasn't going to get any cheaper to buy the engine. As of that note, just like I brought a a quick thing. I know that I was been asked about where's our engine and when's it going to get here? The the pumper that we already paid for, I know we did that a little bit about out of order, but the pumper that we paid for already, if we were to order that same pumper today, it would cost us an extra $209,000.
Wow.
If we ordered that same exact truck today, and it would still take another year and a half. We're trying to get a timeline for when that truck's going to get here, and we're hoping to get it here before the end of the year. We'll get you an update as soon as we can on that. But that paying cash for that truck like we did when we when we came before council last time, so far has saved us 200, almost $10,000. And we expect kind of the same thing with this.
I I would agree. I think there's a lot of things in here. We we have water. We have sewer. We have gas. We have plenty of electricity. Those kinds of things are very expensive when you're building a building. That's already on site. Our civil involvement is really limited on this project versus a ground-up or a virgin site. So I think there's a lot of advantages we have. We do have the escalation of material costs and availability materials, and that's what we're up against, and we're going to do anything we can to really ruffle the feathers and and leave no stone unturned to make sure that we're giving the best possible price before we come back.
And I'll make one additional comment, Mr. Mayor and Council, is the way that we did this initially is Perman Architects and Gerald work for us. They work for the town. They're not working for the contractors. This isn't a design bill. He's working for the town. So the discussions that we're having on what can we do? What are our other options? How can we save money for the town? He's working on our behalf, not on behalf of the contractor. So that's that's the advantage that we have going into this. And as with with him doing the design and with us putting this out to bed, he will be in on that whole thing as part of the contract that we've already signed, so.
Refresh my memory, how much, we had the three options for the three buildings. What what did we say by choosing this route versus the, I guess, the second best one was the rebuild of another building in town across the street?
Yes, I came before you guys. It was actually in August. We'd already done the budgets budgeting, but in August, I came before council, and the three options were first was to purchase this property and then remodel it, and that total was projected to be 2,225,000. We paid 1.25 million. Yeah, 1.25 for the structure we bought when we bought it. Okay, so we we figured an additional 100 or $1 million to remodel was at the $215 a square foot. The second option, which was buying the structure across the street that was vacant, we still had to purchase that and remodel. Initial acquisition was 350 to 400,000. Demolition, construction for that was three and a half to four million dollars. So right off the bat, we saved 1.8, 1.9 million dollars between those two options. And if we were to buy bacon property and built from ground up, which there was three properties available on Cave Creek Road that we looked at and priced out, and you don't need the details of that, but I have it for you here. It's in the council action. The project estimate of that was between 6.1 and 6.3. So we went from 2.2 initially to between 6.1 to 6.3. So saved about four million dollars by doing it this way instead of building ground up. So.
Yeah.
We're we're not cheap, and I I told you that. It wasn't going to be cheap, but we were going to do everything we can to to do it correctly for the town.
This this is open discussion, so.
Jim, when the construction begins, will the firefighter still operate in that building?
That's still up for discussion. What we put out for the initial design and and the we want them we want them to be in that building as long as they can. Now that's going to turn into a discussion with the contractor and with the architects, because if we keep them in there, it might take nine months to do it. If we move them out, it might take five. Those are the the things. We don't know that yet. We have other options, temporary facilities. You know, we'll we'll work with.
Rural Metro in carefree.
No, no. Well, they might have a pretty.
You never know unless you ask.
No, I won't go there. We'll find a facility or at least a temporary facility we can put them into.
Okay, thank you.
But that that's part of the ongoing discussion. That's that's a challenge. That's a a cost benefit and time benefit.
Absolutely. I mean, the difference in four months could be a lot of money.
It could be, yes.
And also the reduction in the response time, if they have to move or navigate around construction.
Yeah.
Activities, the trucks can be covered in dust. The electronics are covered in dirt and dust from the construction. And we've done this before numerous times with the remodels. Typically, we can move them out just outside of that property, even on the same property, but in some sort of a temporary quarters is always better for everybody. I think the firefighters would be better suited to, to be honest, and responses out of that facility during construction. With benefit, if we can find a way to make that work and we are looking at that option for sure.
The those decisions, like I said, haven't been made yet.
Haven't we started building our budget? This year, when do we?
Mayor Councilman Rhodes, internally, we have already begun. We're we're working with that budget. And our capital improvement program is what we kick off, so.
Comments, questions?
Well, there's public comments, so wait, why don't you wait till the public comment period? Would you say that Daisy's a typical fire department with personnel?
With personnel?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So how many of them are registered contractors that do that work on their day off?
I'm going to plead the fifth on that.
That's pretty normal in city of things.
Yeah, but you're going to for a town building and a town project, you're going to want licensed contractors. I don't know if they're all licensed or not.
I I do have one last question. Are there any kind of matching funds for processes like this?
Mayor Vice Mayor, that's a great question. I was on a conference call about national grants and grant opportunities. And one of them is for rural communities less than, I think it's less than six thousand. And one of them is money for fire stations, police and fire facilities and what you need. And I called the national group and I got the Arizona director and Cave Creek does not qualify because our our median income is way over what they consider needy or a small community that they're going to support. Their only option was to say, we will give you a loan if you want to apply for a loan, but we will not do any grant money for you for this. Now that said, that's not for the structure, but actually, last week and then again today, I followed up with Daisy Mountain. And one of the things that should be in this building. And I found out last week when I've dealt with the insurance industry, if you remember, I'm dealing with ISO on grading the community. One of the things that a fire station is supposed to have is secondary power. We haven't built that into this discussion yet. The only thing that has secondary power is the dispatch. And so we're going to get docked a few points from ISO because our facility does not have secondary power. That said, we're doing a joint grant with Daisy Mountain to put secondary power in our station and one of their stations. So we're applying for a firefighter assistance grant for that. So there is some grants out there for some specific things. But for the structure, we were flat out.
You're talking like a backup generator?
Yes, secondary power, yes, backup generator.
So that grant was based on median income of the population?
It it was median income and it and it did not use the what most recent twenty twenty or twenty twenty one census. They just haven't caught up yet. And so we we couldn't even use that, but we were we were about double the what they considered.
Not even close.
We weren't even close. No. Apologize for that, but I don't know why.
You were comments, questions from council? Mr. Mr. Johnson, isn't it? Yeah. Did you go and ask your question?
Well, I think Encyclopedia Julie might have answered it for me already. Just thinking when it, when the fire department came, I was just going to ask, can we put Cape Creek Fire Department on the building?
Yeah, it's coming. Yeah.
Yeah, i- if you look at the picture, we put Cape Creek Fire Department on the building. And the the logo on the right, I don't.
I noticed that it looked like the CBS logo. I thought that was just a.
It's the one that's on the on the track. That's a that's a metal rendering of the one that we put on the truck. But it, yeah, it's it says Cape Creek Bar Department and then the logo on the right is the combination Cape Creek. Daisy Mountain is the one that matches the truck, but it'll be a like a.
Yeah.
Okay, now that it's zoomed in, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is counsel is then we'll move to a public comment on this.
David Phelps?
Very impressed by the renderings and by the presentation. On page one twenty five, there's a wall section that's going to come out. There's going, there's going to be a sectional wall removed on the backside of the driveway there. Within the section that's going to be removed is about a twelve inch ironwood tree stump. Some unknown arborist terrorist decided to cut that tree off at six feet tall instead of trimming the branches that were necessary to trim. And why I'm pointing this out is it's because there will be other trees that will need to be replaced because I'm thinking that they're so large, they won't be able to be salvaged and the cost to salvage sometimes exceeds the value in putting, you know, three smaller trees in, as we found out by a lot of the development in our town. And so it led me to conclude that I need to make you guys a recommendation based on the architectural renderings on page one thirty four and one thirty five that I suggest that we engage the desert awareness committee to help us with re landscaping what is going to be in the public view in front of the fireplace or the fireplace, the fire station. And possibly put the landscape element in a separate budget because it becomes a community project and maybe what they could do with that area that's going to be in front of the building. Cause I'm sure it's going to be raised in various ways. The landscape area could be used as an exhibit area, so we could show how you can incorporate the natural living desert into your re landscaping approaches. And I'm not being critical of what you're looking at, because I know the idea on one thirty four and one thirty five was to show you what the building looked like. But it led me to believe that we need help on figuring out what Cave Creek's revegetation in front of the fire and fire in front of the fire station looks like. Very appreciative of the breakup of the roof lines that have been added to the front of the building. It really looks good. I I think it's really something to be proud of. And so I'm glad to be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ Phelps. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor Council. We have looked at this site plan a lot. As you can tell, we've done a lot of discussions. The area that Mr. Phelps was talking about is on the southwest corner. And as you mentioned, there's a a very impacted large ironwood there. And there's also a swallow that is looks like it's in the process of dying. We would need that area for the turning radius for the trucks to get in, so we would have to redo that portion. The front area and the north side is a couple of areas that site retention. And so that whole thing would have to, and it's going to be engineered and designed to hold the water, the site water that it needs to retention basin that it currently is. If you go out there now, you'll notice that that's what's out there. I had some preliminary discussions with the planning director and that portion of Cave Creek Road in front of the fire station will eventually turn into the trails that you see over here now as it works its way south. And so we should be able to do a kind of a joint project there as we do the trails and then re landscape that front as we go along. But that's an area that we do have, we do understand has to be addressed. But we've also got to make sure we have the retention that we're supposed to have for that site.
If I may add, Mayor Council, the the rendering is is correct. It's very good eye, keen eye on your part. The existing vegetation is out there in the existing landscape area. We didn't plan to touch other than just a little bit of rework of the curb of the parking lot. But if we show that on the rendering, you would be able to see the building. So we've basically taken most of that out, but there was never intent to clear that front area just for clarity. It's more of the artistic rendering to show you the building. But the landscape would actually come back through with the full design as far as embracing you know, some other commission or some some donations for for art or landscape. We love that. We embrace it all the time. We work with that with our design team and whatever the other agency is to integrate that in. If they want to, you know, volunteer trees or donate trees, we can work that into the landscape and make it something that adds value to the project.
Rhodes?
Were you, were you talking about the the folks at the Desert Awareness Park and have them help?
Awareness Committee.
Okay. Yeah, I just think that's a good idea. Have them touch bases with them, see if they they want to contribute.
There's no more public comment?
No additional comment.
If there's more council comment, it's a discussion only. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Tell them.
All those in favor?
Thank you.